Ten o'clock, guys ready?
Yeah.
Ready?
Ready. Alright, good morning everyone, we are back. Next on our schedule is Julie with Blue Zones. Julie, are you available?
I'm here, can you see me?
Well, we can see your name.
You can see my name but not my face, okay.
Yeah.
Well, hold on, I can make the camera.
There you go.
Okay, hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to submit to you the final report for Blue Zones Activate Mason County. It was just hot off the press last week, yesterday was the last day of the project, and so I thought it might be really useful to take you through the project a little bit, like memory lane, so we can remember, you know, where we came from, when we all did this, and you know, who we spoke to, because I think it's gonna matter in the future as we work together more, and you'll see the foundation. It's a little bit like a formal public involvement process that you can always go back to. So, as you may recall, Blue Zones started two years and two months ago. And if you go through this book, it's called our Look Book, and you'll see lots of familiar faces of all the events and everything that we talked, that we did. But we also listed every single person we talked to when we decided which projects to work on. It was a community process, so you see that work. I think, you know, we focused on food and the built environment, and that was because it's the longest policies that you can enact that'll last the longest, so decades. Well, I really thank Mason Public Health, Mason Health, Choice Regional Health Network, and the community for supporting this. And real quick, I'll just tell you in the finality of the biggest projects that we worked on. One is the Salmon Center. We worked on their, supporting their development of their master plan to increase food production and oversight management. And you can see that on page 11, the drawings from that particular piece of art. The gardens will be growing for food productions at the food bank, and then for community food as well. And then we also supported the food system support for Mason Health. And a lot of that was connections to local farmers. We helped with food delivery and food services and things like that. We just worked really closely with Ashley Johnson there to support her and her efforts. And then we also worked on the Catalyst Garden at 12,000 square foot city block right on top of the Hill in Shelton. And we worked with the Master Gardeners on developing that project into what could possibly be a world-class education center. And right now, it grows food for food banks and for the community. And then also, there's a new pollinator garden up there in case you ever wanna go. But since we supported this evolution of this work, they've already received a little bit of a benefactor fee, so that was pretty great. And then the last project we worked on was supporting the city of Shelton in the development of the 2015 Walkability Plan. We supported the R-Walk, the Creative District Development, things like that. And you know, I say all these things, not like it's ending. The support will continue, but for the purposes of Blue Zones, that's the summary of what we did. Any questions or anything you wanna ask me?
Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Wanted to acknowledge that you were absolutely out there in the, in our community, making a difference. And so I wanted to thank you for your time and your partnership. And I look forward to what's next.
Thank you, me too. I'm thrilled.
Great presentation, that's why I'm actually reading it also. Great job.
I really think it's important with the future decisions that we know that we were really thorough in involving the community and the efforts that we made. It was definitely community-owned and the leadership of everyone participating, I would say, really grew.
Yeah, I think it's great. Melissa, do you wanna add anything? I'm sorry to throw you in there.
Julie's amazing. We're very fortunate to have her as the new Executive Director of Mason Matters.
Thank you.
I think that there's definitely going to be, I don't wanna use the word expectation, but I think we're all excited that there is a possibility that a lot of this work may continue through that.
Right, I was hoping that you would bring that up, so.
Shameless plug.
My favorite food tray. That's where they make the plantains that I get.
Oh, yeah.
There's the cream in them.
Yes, well, if you do look at the last page, I think it's the last page, it does say in conclusion where we're going next. And that is, I have accepted the position as Executive Director of Mason Matters. And Mason Matters has agreed to continue to support not only these efforts, but others as we develop. So that's pretty exciting. So yeah, have a laugh, just. And then I really do, again, I think it just helps to know where the decisions came from.
Yeah, I think so too. And you're gonna remain in the EDC building, right?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, no, I, like I said, I appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you.
And look forward to the new adventures.
Me too. Thank you.
I think there's an opportunity to actually reference some of this material in our comprehensive plan update. We have components of our comprehensive plan that is really.
Oh, this would be awesome.
I think benefit in referencing some of the details that they have in here. Now, I was just thinking about your community garden, Julie, and that's really in the city of Shelton. But I do think that that is something that even, the city of Shelton is within Mason County, so important to have some of those things. But to identify these as opportunities where you can create some of that, there's components of the comprehensive plan that would benefit from it.
That would be terrific.
Alright. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, have a good day, you guys.
You too. Alright, so we are early for our Housing Authority Board interviews. Our first one is with Roger.
That's when he just itching to get up here, be able to get back to his life, though. Just hanging out? There's gotta be something you wanted to talk to us about.
Oh.
Were you late?
Very late. It's my motorcycle, I didn't really drive it. My car is.
I don't know what it is about that, but I have the same issue. For some reason, the motorcycle, you just don't think the.
You only drive it in the summer.
I was like a year off.
I ride it year-round.
Yeah, I've heard some of our staff say that they're rather late as well, so they can't say anything either.
We can definitely jump into some central service items if you want to.
I'd like to get out early.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
I don't see Roger there on the screen yet, but.
Cool. Go for it.
Call me Nicole.
Oh, I forgot my.
Hi, Nicole.
Alright, good morning, good. You're just.
I'm here, go ahead and get started, Mackenzie.
Kids, take her away. Go, kids, go.
Good morning. So I am just here, there is a news release for Board of Equalization vacancies. We did receive an application from the member whose term is expiring. So I think we still have another regular member position open. So however you guys would like to proceed, let me know. Alright.
Keep it simple.
Perfect.
You recommend we reapply?
Janice, what do you recommend?
Oh, yes, it's Janice Loomis, our current member. And Cheryl's our chair, and.
Cause you never know, there's.
Catherine or Diane. That's our current, yeah, is our current member, so she's, I wanna say reapplied.
Okay.
Good.
I'm very interested to stay on, she's signed up for training coming up. And I think we'll have turnover again next year and the following year. So her terms will be up next, May 26th, May 27th.
Awesome, so I'll amend the news release to say one open vacancy, and then we'll go ahead and move forward with appointing Janice Loomis. Alright, I think that's all I can help. That was easy.
If we can get a Realtor on that board. So I wonder if we can get a Realtor on that.
Do you know any?
I know a lot of them, but.
I have two, kinda two per diem or extra help positions that I don't think are appointed. I don't know if that's necessary, just three.
Cause we have, you said we have one opening this at large?
Yeah, we have one regular member position open, and then I think one or two on call.
Yeah.
They used to be on commission and that, I haven't seen them in a while.
But I know, any of the Realtors I know are so busy that it would be hard to, I think, get their schedules aligned with once they do start having the hearings. So that would be my only concern. Yeah.
That'll be their problem if they take it, it will be chucked.
That's true.
That's true. Put it up on my paper. Okay.
Alright, Mary?
So, coming before you with recommendations for an updated non-rep resolution, some moves. So moving the jail chief position from range 43 to 45, and then moving the Deputy Director of Public Works Utilities and Waste Management position from range 44 to range 46. And this is based off of final recommendations from our study last year after additional review.
Normally, we don't move those things forward, but that is all come before, pad before. So I think I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, cause these have been going on for a long time, right?
They have.
These are, we often have positions and responsibilities here within Mason County that are unique to Mason County. And I think that definitely the Deputy Director of Public Works and Utilities is an example of that. With the specialized type of sewer systems that we have here in Mason County, he is required to carry a certain level of classification from the Department of Ecology or Certification, it's like a licensure, very similar to an engineer that's designing roads. He's technically an engineer that manages wastewater plants. If we did not have this position, it would be, it would be difficult to do. We would probably have to contract out with an engineering firm to manage that. And our challenge was is that other counties that are in our comp counties that we compare everything else to don't have as sophisticated of water and sewer utilities. So it was definitely a challenge to go through that, but really appreciate Mary's work on this, and I feel like we came to a resolution that makes a lot of sense. So thank you for supporting that.
It's absolutely the right thing, with, thank you for all the work.
Well, Mason County, I've always thought it was very special, and I'd rather not be at Crab Creek.
Yes.
I changed some of the languages, but.
Is Nicole here?
I'm taking Nicole's, Nicole's on vacation, I'm taking her.
Cool.
You're awfully nice.
I'm awfully nice. Didn't you hear him say that he's Nicole today?
Yeah, I did not hear you.
I missed it too.
So this is just the same thing we're bringing back. It's the weapon screening, the random thing. Oh, before we had an issue, Dracoby called us up and talked to us about the officers coming through. So we changed that wording, that a officer, what's that word?
Commissioned.
Commissioned officer is allowed to come through there at any time and carry a weapon, cause you never know when that could go south, and I guess at that point in time. Did we change to say Mason County commissioned officer or? No, we just said commissioned officer and/or first responders. On duty.
On duty, yeah.
Now, a commissioned officer, this is the talk we had with the sheriff, and I know he was involved, undersheriff, that a commissioned duty is actually always on. So. It does bother me for the locals, it's just that how do you verify who somebody is? Is the hard part later, but if you're comfortable with this, I'm comfortable with this. I know for our people, I was completely comfortable with it, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, to limit it to Mason County would carve out Washington State Trollfish and Wildlife, and some of the other folks who are also sending folks through our courthouse. And it's a security interest of theirs to make sure that they're armed in such a way that they can protect themselves.
It does say in there a little bit deeper that, you know, they have to provide, you know, a badge or a commissioned card to have to get through. And I would like to move this on to tomorrow if I could, to get this through.
Well, we don't have. We don't have a.
I would like to do it next week. See how powerful she is? She gets you to do it a whole week later. But that's fine. Impressive, well done, Mackenzie. Keep the. And that's all Nicole has. Thank you, Nicole.
Good job.
We always appreciate you.
So the next item on the list is our famous wood chips out in our parks. So we've got, we've actually going back to the wood chips that we've used in the past. So every couple of years, we pick a couple of our parks, and they go out and take the old stuff out and bring new stuff in. This proposal is for Union Park and Walker Park. And since the last time we talked about this, we had quite a bit of constituent feedback when we were looking at some type of rubberized chips, both from the Squawks and Tribe, as well as some of our constituents and even some of our employees that enjoy our parks with their children, were concerned about that. And so we actually did go and dig into it a little bit, which great example of where public input can help improve our process. So we did identify that they were 100% correct, that some of those items do have potential harmful impacts. And so we're gonna go back to the wood chips. And during that meeting, I actually had one of our constituents bring in wood chips, cause he said, "We're in Mason County, and we have a lot of wood in Mason County." And so he gave some examples of bark that he had. The bark that he had was definitely, probably more like a beauty bark, and would not work well in our playgrounds because of the slivers. So the bark that we get is approved bark. It is wood. It's engineered wood fiber is what they call it. And I brought the commissioners some examples of what that looks like, so.
Mark, can you consider, can you consider talking to Public Works? It might make things a lot simpler if they come to shop fact those pits out instead of trying to pick it all up and shovel and stuff like that.
Sure, yeah, we have, I think we have the back truck, but I will, yeah. So the part of it is then, we received some quotes on what it takes, and this is about $4,830 for both parks combined. And then our staff would definitely be involved in getting that blown into the areas that need.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
Can we get it on tomorrow's agenda? Same place, same place.
We will definitely move that forward. I don't know that it really needs to be on an agenda, that we in the past have.
Are we entering into a contract? If we're not entering into a contract, then we wouldn't.
We are, it's just, it's actually just letting the commission know that this would actually be paid for out of the Real Estate Excise Tax II Fund. So our capital improvements to our parks, that's an allowable cost there, and this is that.
But do we have that something miscellaneous or whatever is aligned in the REIT?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, pretty normal operation for us to budget to align item within REIT II to do just this type of work. So it's already budgeted, and there's funds there that are available to use for that. And it's under $5,000, so I think that we could move forward without having to do an official action.
And the only reason why I was asking is if it wasn't that we had to do an official action again, but I'd rather not, so.
Yep. I wanted to bring it back just to let the commissioners know that we did go back to the engineered wood fibers and also the public. So that the public knows that we are not going to use any type of rubberized chips. So thank you for the feedback. And that's all I have for you.
Alright, and if you have any administrator updates, we'll wait until after we. Cause I do believe that our applicants are.
They're not both of them, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, you guys are dismissed, thank you.
Just thank you.
I know, I feel like I said the principal's office.
You use your wheel.
I've been watching those auditor videos, you're dismissed.
Alright, well first we have Roger. Come on up. Thank you for coming in.
Good to see you.
How are you doing?
Conductively well, thank you.
Good, good. Well, Roger, thank you for applying. We typically have a little standard, or standard questions that we ask. Commissioner Netherland always says there's no right or wrong answer, and he's, it's true. There's not. So we will alternate questions. And Commissioner, if you wanna go first, and then I'll take the second.
Alright. First off, we recognize you already helped us and served on some of the county boards, and so thank you for the work that you do with that. As the commissioner said, there's no right or wrong answer, brevity's appreciated, though. With that being said, what do you see as the function of the Housing Authority Advisory Board?
To, well, let's see, Advisory Board is trying to get to people that are in the apartments or in the houses, that they treat it with respect. We can advise them of, advise them of how they should respect the property. And we are doing the best we can to respect them, so why can't they respect us?
Alright, and why do you wanna sit on this board?
Because I have seen so many houses, so many homes torn, physically torn up for no apparent reason, just a hole in the wall, something like that, you know? Not respect, it's just the parking is any which way, but, you know, that's all over the place. They don't bother to park nicely, they just stop their car in the middle of the street. And same goes with the houses, they go into the houses and for no apparent reason, they'll put a hole in the wall, or break a window, or start a, they, they seem to start a project, like working on the car. They'll start a project and then not finish it. And I would like to be part of the Housing Authority to advise them on what is, how to do it, or not how to do it, but what is going on that they had, not to tell them that they can't do it, but to help them keep things clear, so it looks clean.
Now, the board typically meets at 2:30 on the third Wednesday of each month. Will that be an issue for you?
No.
Okay, what's your background and experience with affordable housing?
I don't believe I have any.
Alright.
Please describe your familiarity. I've been hanging around here too long. And understanding of the rules and laws governing housing authorities, RCW 35.82.
That is probably, Mark, one of the bigger things, because they twist the laws. There are people that are in apartments that twist the law to their benefits. And I would like to see the law made, or not the law, well, yes, the law. So if they have, I don't wanna tell people how to live, but I want them to respect us as we respect them. We have supplied them with a home, they can respect us.
Alright, would you have any conflicts of interest that might come up?
I don't believe so.
And here's our favorite question, do you have any questions for us? That would help you decide whether you wanna take this audit or change your mind, and go running out the door.
I will, as I am getting into it, as I do get into it, I will understand it better. Then I can confirm or talk to you intelligently.
I got you.
One way or the other.
Alright.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
We will, we will.
Thank you.
Let you know as soon as we can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for coming in.
Thank you.
And for applying. Alright, do you go by Doug or Doug's?
Doug.
Alright, come on up, Doug.
Welcome.
Thank you. And you are?
Randy Netherland.
Randy, and?
I'm Sharon.
Sharon, hello.
I'm Mark Neary, I'm county administrator, nice to meet you.
We've got one commissioner that's not here, he's on vacation, probably having a lot of fun in the sun or something. How weird, how weird. Well, again, I do wanna thank you for applying and for coming in. Like we said, we'll alternate questions?
Yep.
I'll just dump right in.
Okay, again, welcome. What do you see as the function of the Housing Authority Board?
So I think the Housing Authority Board, it's an advisory one. So to take a look at and to listen to the community to figure out what's going on around housing, and to be able to then convey that to whatever commissioners or governing boards are responsible to try to do something about it, try to help foster that communication and awareness.
Alright, thank you. Why do you wanna sit on the board?
So I serve as pastor at Faithless in Church. And what I've found over the last, especially five or six years, I've probably had hundreds of conversations with people who are living in their cars, sometimes sleeping outside my office, trying to figure out how to pay the bills, try to figure out a place to park their camper. And housing's a big issue. And also Faithless in Church was part of the, or helped start Community Lifeline. And, you know, it started as a warming house. And the need for emergency and temporary and initial housing is so overwhelming. We need the best people in the community to get together and try to come up with real solutions for, that meet the needs of our neighbors, whether they have a house or not. And, and just to, so just listening to these conversations, recognizing the needs of the community. What I'm good at is listening and bringing people together and trying to help people come up with good solutions. So that's why I wanna be on the Advisory Board. I don't know if it's this board or whatever board would be appropriate, but it's one thing to listen and say, "Somebody ought to do something about this." It's another thing to say, "Okay, then based on what I know and what I can bring to the table, let's see if I can help."
So the board typically meets at 2:30 PM on the third Wednesday of each month. Will this be an issue?
Should be fine.
And you kind of addressed this one already, what's your background and experience with affordable housing?
So I've been fortunate not to be in that situation, but lots of conversations. Most recently, there is a gal, lives by 45 minutes north and probably in the trailer areas. I've known her for five years, she has been working her tail off to just try to keep her house. And the challenges of having a car that works to be able to get her kids to school. The challenge of when something breaks down, when, I mean, and she'll be the first to say she's had substance issues as well, and so it's not, like, she's totally, I mean, but, but then watching the difference there and recognizing, once you lose your house, now just surviving becomes a full-time job. And to watch her, to see her, she's gotten to a place where she actually feels some security. She's like, "I think I can keep it, my husband has a job now, I'm doing this, the kids are doing better. We have reliable transportation, and we have our house still." But, but to watch, and she is a lovely human being who is trying her best. And there are always people who are making mistakes and doing stupid things. All of us do stupid things, sometimes, some of us more than others. And you have to, you have to manage that, absolutely. But mostly people are doing the best they can. And how can we create a community that is, is doing the best that we can to support all of our neighbors, not just some of them? Did I answer the question? I probably started preaching or something like that. It says occupational hazard, sorry.
No, that was great.
So.
Well, please describe your familiarity and understanding of the rules and laws governing housing authorities, RCW 35.82.
I know a lot more about the Bible than I do about, but I'm a quick study. And that's part of what I wanna learn, I wanna be able to have a better understanding of what the rules and regulations, what the limits are of county, city, and zoning and all that kinda stuff versus what the needs are, and to try to bring all that together.
Okay, gotta say, it's probably more fun to read the Bible than it is RCW's, so.
Get into the lit, I guess, you can get.
Alright, would you have any conflicts of interest serving on this board?
I don't think so.
Alright, do you have any questions for us?
No, thank you guys for what you do, and we have to all work together on this stuff. I just wanted to see if I can help out a little bit.
Appreciate that. Madam Chair, since they're both here, do you mind if I say something about this? Appreciate that, ma'am Sharon, since they're both here, do you mind if I say something about this? Because we're kind of misrepresenting this a little bit, and since they're both here, we could have, if we have a third person, we can make sure that they're asked the same questions. Do you mind if I describe what this is, because it's not, this is a misnomer, this is not an advisory board, this is an actual authority board.
Okay.
We appoint them, but they actually have duties and, and things that they're trying to accomplish, which is a little different. And we have no authority over that, they currently have apartments. Right now, they sold a couple and they have apartment complexes that they manage and run, everything I got. They are currently looking at maybe opportunities to build new housing to bring in. But they're an actual governmental authority that's set out, so they are a little bit different. And they, they, they don't answer to us, so in the future, I know we need to change this, because it's not an advisory board. You actually, if you're selected, you would be making the motions as a seconds and taking the responsibilities and changing the future.
So, so the county owns, actually, or is this?
This, this has.
This is the Housing Authority.
Housing Authority. We just appoint so that therefore there's an opportunity to keep honesty and integrity and not people making money from inside. I thought it was set up by the state of Washington, not by us. So, when we took this on, it was created many years ago, we have the authority, so this way, the authority to appoint this way just kinds of helps keep them honest. Not that we have bad people, I'm just saying that's kind of the reason why it had to go through the county.
And I, I honestly, I was looking through just some of the different sort of subcommittees and like.
No, we have, we have almost, everything else we do here is advisory, this is the only one that I know of.
The only one that we have.
You too.
We, yeah, that we just, we appoint board members and that's it. And then it's up, then it's up to the board members to make.
So, and then, but who, who, who's the advisory board then accountable to, is that to the?
The state of Washington, yeah, or, and, and the laws that govern authorities and stuff. But there's opportunities for you guys to go after funding, there's opportunities for you to plan things for the future. And how, there's a lot of things that years ago, they were completely broken, they got down to one member and they were collapsing. And if they would collapse, we're the beneficiary, I don't know that we wanted to have it, but we didn't want to be landlords and stuff, so we got a little more active. But no, it's, they're on their own, they stand on their own. And hopefully you'll, if you are selected, you guys will help bring in more housing for those that are in need. They have a piece of property, we're going to have to do that now. Don't I describe that well?
Good enough.
Uh, Matt, did you still want to be?
Well, I mean, is this on the record, I don't know what to come.
Yes, everything's on the, you're being filmed by six.
I, I say everything, yeah, but, but I mean, the hard is that, that, you know, you look at Community Lifeline. And, and as an organization, I mean, they run their course, thank God for, for the incredible work they've done. I don't think that, just the people I know, it's not, there doesn't have the infrastructure to sustain that. But what you're looking at is, I mean, you got to be looking at a, a five million dollar starting place to, to be able to build or provide some kind of temporary emergency type housing that has services available to help process and move people through there. So, you have, you're going to have to have like a five or eight year timeline to get that building. And then you have to have something in the shorter term to figure out now, what are we going to do between now and twenty, and twenty thirty, when you can build this and that. And figuring out, talking to small businesses here in town, I mean, having, having that population right there in the middle of town, it's not a great look. And it doesn't really serve particularly, you've got, you know, building regulations, you've got cost of land, you've got all these different pieces going on. And then you've got how you have organizations and then how there's nonprofits work together to get all this kind of stuff. It's an amazingly, and I just kind of, I've been dabbling around, you look at this whole thing, it's like, holy cow, there's just a bunch of stuff here. And then to try to get all those players together into one place and say, now, what can we do? And then if there is a housing authority that has access to some land or some grants, that we'd be able to, to then bring that, you know.
I think it would be a fun adventure.
Yeah, they currently don't have any warmest items or anything like that, but I don't think there's any rule that precludes them from expanding their, their choice of operations and what they want to do to try and work through, because they're standalone that way, so.
Is, is there a place to learn more about the Housing Authority?
RCW thirty five eighty-two.
Alrighty, write that down here.
Yeah, municipal research services.
M R S C.
M R S C.
M R S C.
But it's RCW.
O R G.
O R G, and then RCW?
Three five point eight two.
I can do this, three five point eight two. Alright.
Two excellent resources right there.
Excellent, okay, very cool.
And then, yeah, I mean, there's no problem also reaching out to other housing authorities.
Okay. Again, I'm used to kind of hanging out with, you know, churches have committees and councils and everybody boards and all these kinds of things.
Eager to work with you.
Yeah, very good, so.
Thank you guys. Alright, we'll, we'll let you know probably in the next few weeks or sooner.
Or sooner.
Yep.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys very much for your work.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, I see that we had two on here, we had three last week, is there?
Yeah, one was true.
Thank you, Mark.
Did she withdraw?
No, she wasn't available today.
I thought she was just coming in. Which one was medical?
We've had a lot of applications come in from all kinds of stuff.
I thought there was one that was medical that said that she, or that couldn't do it because of medical reasons.
Uh, one of them was the gentleman to, one of the gentlemen today, I believe, has something going on next week.
Oh, okay.
But he did have something today that canceled, so he was able to schedule for today.
Oh, great, so we have a third candidate next week?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you're going to wait till then?
I don't know, because there's only two.
How many positions do you have open?
Two.
Okay.
That's right.
It was two, right?
Is that correct?
I believe there's two, but I would need to double check.
Oh, I'm sure there's at least two, I just don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no problem appointing either one of them.
Yeah, me either.
Yeah, well, do you want to wait or you want to? I, I go either way.
Yeah, well, let's interview the, the, the next person too, since she did put in her application. I think that's fair.
That's what we're doing.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
Okay, great, okay, Public Works.
Don't change the questions, because they have to be the same questions, but after this, let's remove the, the.
Take that advisory, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll get that then.
But not for her, because we're required to ask them the same questions.
You're done?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're moving right through it today, so.
Good deal.
Glad that you guys were obviously on your way, because I texted you, letting you know we were a little early, so come, come down, but yeah.
Yes, I was occupied and driving.
I would love to get up early.
Alright, well, we'll shoot for it.
Well, you've got, the only problem is you have an executive session for potential litigation scheduled for eleven twenty.
Eleven twenty-five.
Nope, can't change that, that's what it is.
Nope, thought we could be done by eleven twenty-five.
We always run late, so I did not anticipate us coming.
Neither did we, it's like.
Alrighty.
Alright, well, first we have a news release that I know that Michael will be really excited to read.
Build the truck?
This is fun.
Smile.
Mackenzie said I don't have to read it, I just have to sum it up.
Oh, that's true, okay.
Mackenzie?
That is true.
Takeaway holler, bud, what the heck?
Alright.
I thought we were going to make him smile too, she, that's true, she would have stopped him, no, smile, wait, can't start until you smile.
So, it's a news release, so the Public Works Truck event is May twenty-second, from nine AM to two thirty.
And there's two places, two three.
Yeah.
Two locations.
We're going to two locations.
Yeah.
One is Belfair, obviously, at the QFC, and the other, is it the northwest corner of railroad, or is it?
OCCU.
The OCCU?
Yep, yep.
So, it's OCC.
Yeah, and that one we're.
Are those the same location, OCCU and the northwest corner of stuff in railroad?
OCCU uptown.
Oh, one is where, I think the.
So, I think there may be three, I'm looking at it, reading it, but there's three separate locations.
And I think the city's got one.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
City doing theirs on the corner of railroad.
Yes, so a friendly competition as always.
That competition, Belfair always knocks it out of the park.
Game on, game on. Okay, and then we have a request to set a public hearing, which we need to do for the ADA transition plan. And so, this is a plan that all cities and counties are required to prepare, and it's part of our federal and state requirements. And so, we've got a plan, and we'll post that up and publish that, and.
So, do you guys come up with that on your own, do you have any type of input? There used to be an ADA group that, that met, they haven't met for years, I, but it was a part of that, I went through the auditor's office at the time.
Yeah.
But it might be a, a good place to get input, if, if you guys are already done with it, it's done, but.
No, so this is the beginning, and this focuses strictly on our transportation elements. And so, we definitely reference who the ADA coordinator is and what our policies are around that and notifications and what's on our web, but expansion, so for other county facilities, whether it's the jail or these facilities or parks and otherwise, yes, that's a future step. And definitely to be coordinated with other departments and offices in the county.
But does this plan have to be complete, is it set by the legislature or?
The transportation portion, we're due in June, so yes.
We have to have that to use if.
We need to get it, yeah, rolling.
That is, that's where I was kind of leading.
Yes.
And it basically addresses sidewalks and stuff, which we don't have electric, so.
Yeah, so our inventory and our assessment was pretty quick. It's all of the policies and procedures and contacts and all of that good stuff that is a little more time consuming, if you will.
And so, does this affect like subdivisions and things like that, when, when the plans are coming in?
Standards, yes, so that is one of the components of the plan that are we making sure that standards are ADA compliant and taking that into effect. And so, yes, that would be part of our, our road standards and are included in our road standards. Yep, yeah, cool, so that is that. So, yes, a plan, and then we have submitted a, a draft plan with our quick inventory and assessment and the outline. Gosh, some time ago, six months ago, I think. And then this will be the actual hearing for the, the planned plan. And it, like all plans, are a work in progress, you come back and review and assess, and if things change or need to be expanded, then that's incorporated in the plan as well.
Okay.
Yeah, cool.
So, do you think?
Yes, please, if that works.
Yep.
Okay, and then Mike's got a consulting agreement to do a great project up on the Tahuya.
So, we have county road project Bear Creek to water by Tiger Lake, and it's a realigned at two ninety-degree curves. The property is owned by Pope and Rainier, and it's under a, a conservation easement through Forterra. So, we're, we want to make an agreement with Forterra, not actually twenty thousand dollars to amend their, their agreement to take this area out of their, of their conservation easement, so that we can actually build the road. So, we've been going around, 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 but we finally got to the point that they said if they'll pay, if we will pay for it, they will do it. So, that will get that project going, so it's funded already, so we'd like to go ahead and move forward with them.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's super exciting, this project has been on our tip at least three times in the last twenty years probably. And have run into right-of-way issues, and we've had to turn funds back. And so, we're really, really excited to move on this, it's a great project. It'll be nice to check that one off the list as well.
Another project you haven't checked off?
Yeah, well, Mike, hold up your, it's, it's got some challenges, it's a really.
Bear Creek to water by the rock pit.
Yeah.
So, both these.
So, we're going to realign, realign the road and lower the profile of it to lessen the gradient steepness and make it like a more safer curve and everything, so we, we have funding for this too. Originally in design, we were going to go through the rock pit, but we're having some problems with that because they have to, the, the M Shaw through, to, to, to the boundaries of the pit has to be rewritten and stuff. And so, it's just a lot of paperwork trouble, so we're, we're looking at another option to go around it, so. We've got funding for it too, we just got to get the right-of-way straightened out and we can move forward. Straighten both of those out.
Yeah, good stuff.
Well, other stuff. You got that for me?
Yeah.
Okay, did that work?
Yep, and then just a quickie on the bid opening for the Matlock Brady, the bid openings.
Matlock Brady from Matlock down to the school opened Puget paving, that was a little bid, one point zero four two million, which is under the engineer's estimate of about fifty thousand. And then the other opening was Matlock Brady, the rest of it going down towards Schaefer. And it was Lakeside was a little bid, they came in at one point three, our estimate was about one point five. And so, we probably, we probably saved two hundred fifty thousand dollars by combining these projects and bidding them at the same time. So, that's, that's good.
That's awesome.
And then, then Matlock Brady, twenty-four point six one, the Culvert down there, we're going to close the road on the twelfth, in the week of the twelfth, and we'll get that in, and then we'll do a little change order with Lakeside to pave that nine hundred foot section, and that'll, that'll complete the whole road.
Get ahold of June, so she can take a ride in the dump truck.
Another one, she didn't get scared off last go around?
No, it was just a smart, or a small, small ride. And so, Jeremy was saying, well, with this project, I mean, you'll take, you'll be, it's a shorter route between the yard and, and Matlock, so.
Yep.
She said she would love to ride in the dump truck, I think she's having a lot of it.
Good deal.
Yeah, 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 and I do want to thank you guys for working with her and getting her out there. I was able to go out with her, I didn't get in the dump truck, just in there, done that sort of thing. But she had a ball, and every time I looked at her, she was just full smiles.
Mm-hmm, yeah, if you're not.
I'd love to send a Jeremy.
Yeah, I bet, yeah.
Um, Richard had to run out to Victor to meet with the contractor out there, the DOT contractor on the Fish Project. They found our sewer line, and so, he wanted to make sure that everything is going according to plan there. But he had some good news to share also, we submitted some scope changes on the commerce grants to make sure that we were fully utilizing them that we received for the utilities. So, I believe both of them, we haven't seen the paperwork back yet, or I don't believe we have, but both were approved by the, the legislature. And so, one would be, we could use the funds that we had in Russellwood to be able to upgrade the meters for the automatic instant read, basically. Yeah, so, yeah.
Wow, that's huge.
Yeah, it is, it's very exciting, I mean, that's something that you may recall commissioners during our outreach with the community rates, that they were like, we really want, can we have the instant read? Concerned about waiting a month and finding out that perhaps they were over or having a big bill, so.
I know, we have a wait before the couple, or before it gets to.
Exactly, yeah.
Going out and reading them shortens the amount of time we spend and stuff.
That too, yes.
I was actually a meter reader for the Puget at one point.
Yeah, and, and as it is, it's a pretty quick thing, but nonetheless, this is even more, so. Yeah, so that's, that's really exciting. And then in Beards Cove, of course, we've got money to replace the AC pipe. And, and this is making sure that if we've got some excess, we can also do a pump replacement in one of the wells. And then also some hydrant work is out there as well, so. Those are, yeah, we're really happy that, well, session was in, it was easy to round up people and, and get approvals for those two revisions. So, once we get that back, we'll, I think Richard has authority to do the signing. The commissioners granted that, but just wanted to make you aware and update you on that.
That's awesome, and I think the governor is planning on having everything signed by. That's awesome, and I think the governor is planning on having everything signed by the ninth. Keep your fingers crossed then, yeah.
Alright, I think that's all we have today.
The school?
The school.
The road, by the school, you're gonna get it swept?
Yes.
Yes, we dropped by there uh uh the other day and Jeremy said he got it on his list, so. It looks like some people were running some quads or something up and down that gravel road and it's kicking rock out at door.
It was a lot, especially that one day, but when I went out there, but I went out there again, it wasn't as much, so.
Yeah.
If I had a broom that tough enough, I'd have just gone out there and dug, but I don't have that kind of broom.
Is it right at the transition, Mike?
No, it's it's on inside there.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
It turns into the dirt road?
Yeah.
To, if you went to, that's where all the gravel's coming out of, but man, it, I think they're standing there with it and just hitting the throttle and making it go out there. The road was so much.
There's some intent there, yeah.
Yeah.
Graspsles?
Only problem is motorcycles that have a really hard time with that over con, over asphalt. It does not do well.
Yeah.
That's why I was getting calls.
Lucky, luckily, that's a slow. Road, it's twenty-five mile an hour, so, but yeah, we we got it on the list to get rid, get it swept.
We had a bunch on on our road with teds, we've got our backpack blower and blow it off.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we've got in general, I mean, the sweeper is it's time, I think, uh, just. What was the other? Johns Prairie, we had a request on, so.
It's the season.
It's cleanup time, exactly, it's the season. Yeah, that and construction.
Put a lot of sand out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, huh. Why would you do that?
That's all I have.
Alright, I have a bundle of joy for you. Yeah. You want a bundle of joy too?
Yes, please.
Would you like a bundle of joy? I can share bundles of easements.
No.
Okay. I have plenty of easement joy to share.
They're so tiny.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm happy to send them electronically as well, sometime, I know you like paper stuff too, so.
I'm gonna buy special glasses for things like that.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, guys. I expect a nice article in the paper, not this week, probably next week, about our public works department.
Yeah, it'll be great for.
So all these parcels are actually all along.
No, this works in reverse, so let me show you.
Right.
So we'll just, we will, we'll take a break.
No, I actually had one thing I need, Mark, then you can go. Hold on a second. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up. Uh, I got a phone call from somebody that's trying to get access to Camp Ho-Ho-Bus. Were you here when we went through that before?
Yeah.
Camp Ho-Ho-Bus is a piece of property that was donated to the Boy Scouts with a revisionary aspect of it. If it wasn't used for for the Boy Scouts, it's supposed to come back to the county. Has campsites and the else, if we end up doing Mason Lake. Economy of scale to be able to have other campsites and stuff like that might be, but if they're working with others to get rid of it, then they're. Not doing it how it's supposed to work. So I already called Tim and gave him a heads up, so I just wanted to let you know with it.
Thank you.
Okay, so ahead.
No, that's awesome.
Now we can leave.
Alright, well, we have a executive session scheduled for eleven twenty-five, so.
Okay, so we will take a break until eleven twenty-five and then meet you in your office for the executive session and no further action is in, right?
We will not be taking any further action today, so.
So immediately following that executive session, and how long do you think that will last?
That will last twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, so, okay, so eleven forty-five, we will, if it's good with you.
That's good with me.
Adjourn.
And I will announce that we adjourned. I'll announce when we're going into executive session out in the lobby, and then I can announce when we adjourn also.
Now we have to come in and adjourn.
Yeah.
No, we're in here in the journey. Well, unless we do it right then. But we can come in if you want.
I'm flexible either way on that, that.
Yeah, that's the time to do it if there's no action.
Yeah.
But if you lost, we can come back in.
I don't know, I don't like either one. You pick and I'll go on with it.
Well, we'll come back in on the journey. That'll be everything else.
Then we have no.
Right?
Yep, okay.
Okay.
How are you?
Good, you have thirty seconds?
I do.